Here she is.
And you're on. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. We have already started the meeting in open session before going into executive session. Now we're reconvening in open session. We're live streaming and we will be broadcasting on MCTV. They will be joining us during the meeting after broadcasting a select board meeting first this evening. A recording will also be available afterwards on MCTV and the district website. Members of the public who wish to attend the meeting may join through the links found on the website under.
Dragged it again.
If you're in the audience, could you please turn your mics off? We appreciate that.
You?
If people want to join us in the audience, the links can be found on the website under school committee notices and agendas for upcoming meetings. Under tonight's school committee meeting, per Governor Baker's order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20, the public will not be allowed to physically access the school committee meeting tonight. Members of the public can access the ways that I've mentioned. The extension of the emergency open meeting law provisions were signed into law as Chapter 20, Section 20 of the Acts of 2021. And the school committee reserves the right to implement additional remote participation procedures if necessary, and will notify the public of these procedures as soon as practicable. We'd like to welcome our Zoom audience and please remember if you are in the Zoom audience to keep your camera and microphone off. When we're having people join us, we'll let you know when to turn your camera on. Before we start in the business of the meeting tonight, I just would like to make a little statement. As some of you may know, our school committee member Mike Langnet unexpectedly passed away in January 15th. Mike dedicated so much of his time and energy to our community, especially the Gil-Monnegu Regional School District, by serving on the school committee. Mike's efforts during his 17-year tenure have made the school district a better place. We will miss his intelligence, thoughtfulness, sense of humor. He was a valued colleague and a friend. Our heartfelt condolences go out to his family. I'd like us to pause for a moment of silence to remember Mike. Thank you. At this point in our meeting, we have an opportunity for public participation. It's policy BEH and public participation has been reinstated to happen remotely. I think we do have someone this evening who'd like to speak, but before we start, I'd just like to, would like to give people a little brief explanation of how public participation works in case we have people that aren't familiar with it. The public is welcome to make comments or read prepared statements during this portion of the meeting. It would be helpful if a copy of any prepared statement is provided to Sabrina as she takes minutes of all of our meetings for us. The school committee does not enter into a discussion during such comments as our role at this time is to be listeners. If the comments are information or opinions, we always appreciate these being shared with us. If there are questions to be answered, we'll be glad to refer them to the appropriate person and an answer will be provided as soon as we possibly can. Thank you. And I think this evening we do have someone joining us to speak. Janay, is it you this evening?
Yeah, right here. Thank you. Good evening. My name's Janay Haskins Hall and I'm the first grade teacher at Gil Elementary School. I'm here tonight with my colleague Sherri Wood to share a letter with you on behalf of the Gil faculty and staff.
Good evening. As a faculty member in the Gil-Monnegu Regional School District since 1987, and having taught and coached in each of the district's elementary schools, I'm honored to be asked by my amazing colleagues at Gil Elementary School to share our letter with you tonight. Dear members of the Gil-Monnegu Regional School Committee, we are here today to advocate for the unsupported needs of our students at Gil Elementary. It is important to fulfill current uncovered special education services as well as dwindling reading intervention support, which have been adversely affected by the ongoing lack of special education teaching staff. These unmet needs are directly impacting student learning for both special education and general education students. It has also created an inequality among the schools in our district. During the 2016-2017 school year, after years of advocating for reading specialist, Gil Elementary was appointed a .4 reading interventionist, which is equated to two hours of intervention a day, only partially covering our needs. As the special education caseload at Gil and the need for reading intervention grew, we came before you in January 2020 to advocate once again requesting a full-time reading interventionist and an additional special education teacher. The reading interventionist position was increased to full-time just before March 2020. However, perhaps unbeknownst to you, the full-time reading interventionist position never truly came to fruition. In September 2020, our reading interventionist began delivering special education reading grid C services, which means reading instruction that takes place outside of the general education classroom, because the amount of reading grid C services was greater than one special education teacher could deliver across seven grade levels. This model was originally proposed as a short-term solution, but has regretfully continued into the current school year. This is because special education services have continued to increase at Gil School. At Gil School, a special education services have to be scheduled across seven different grade levels, three lunch periods, two recess periods, the new team teaching model that began during this 2021-2022 school year, along with the student learning opportunities provided only once a week to students by specialists like music art, PE, etc. Continuing the use of this model has a Band-Aid for special education services has required our reading interventionist to now deliver special education reading services for 50% of her daily schedule. In addition, the reading interventionist often misses even more intervention time when she is required to attend IEP meetings and consult with a special education teacher regarding progress reports and IEP goals for the students to whom she is delivering the special education services. This has caused a significant decrease in the amount of reading intervention that is available for general education students in K-3 and has eliminated the opportunity for reading intervention for grades four, five, and six altogether.
Research shows that early reading intervention, when implemented effectively, can bring 95% to 98% of students to grade level. Yet with the current model, we are not able to give all students the intervention support they need. Students who have received appropriate early reading intervention have been able to get back on track. However, students who don't receive intervention or who still need intervention after second grade and get dropped, then go on to remain below reading level in the subsequent grades and face a widening gap between their abilities and grade level expectations. Ultimately, this results in students being evaluated for special education services that may not have been required had the appropriate intervention been able to take place. Due to the lack of resources for appropriate early reading intervention and the growing needs we are experiencing as a consequence of pandemic-related learning loss, we expect special education referrals and services to continue to increase. We request to have an additional special education teacher. Over the last few years, there has been an increase in the number of students requiring special education services at Gil Elementary. This increased caseload, coupled with the request for more educational assessments of newly referred students and laws around appropriate educational grouping, has overbooked our sole special education teacher. The special education schedule has been booked to capacity. Due to this, any educational assessments administered interrupt current special education services without the ability to offer compensatory services. Additionally, current students receiving services and future students requiring services may not be placed appropriately for their needs due to the increased caseload. For the purpose of equity and clarity of student need at Gil Elementary, we have also shared a separate graph with the committee comparing the number of reading interventionists to the number of classes and students served. This is the support schools have in addition to specialized instruction. We hope that this helps demonstrate our concerns and need for support. Martin Luther King Jr. once said that "our lives begin to end the day we become silent about the things that matter." We will continue to advocate for the students of Gil Elementary. If you have any questions or need any clarification about our needs, please feel free to reach out to us. Thank you for your consideration, the faculty and staff of Gil Elementary School.
Jane, you're muted. That's true. I should remember that. Heather, did we have anyone else who wanted to speak this evening? No. Okay, thank you.
That was it. Thank you, Jane.
Moving on to important events. Brian?
So there are just four items upcoming. The Sheffield School Council met today. I'm not sure why I left that on the agenda, but tomorrow is an early release day for professional development as February, Wednesday, February 26th, as well as Wednesday, February 2nd is also an early release day. And the Gil PTO will be meeting remotely on Thursday, February 3rd at 5:15 PM. The Pandemic Response Advisory Committee has met throughout the month of January and we will have a brief meeting tomorrow as well.
Is that meeting tomorrow at 4:00 or 4:50?
At 4:00. It should be at 4:00 o'clock. I moved the last meeting to 4:15 so that Melissa Bednarzki was able to attend to provide us with a briefing on the proposed testing, change in state testing protocols.
Thank you. Do Student Representative Report is next. Is, do I see Sina joining us tonight?
Yeah, I'm here.
Hi, Sina. How are you?
I'm pretty good. How are you?
Good, thank you.
All right, so I have a lot more compared to the past weeks. I think people are finally getting back into the swing of things and we're starting to do more fundraisers. I think every grade is actually working on a fundraiser right now. Not all of them are like happening this week, but they're being planned and will be happening in the near future. The freshmen just started a hot chocolate fundraiser, so they'll be selling that. And they're also planning a, I guess, a bracelet fundraiser. I don't know if they're selling like this random bracelets. That'll be cool. The juniors are gonna do a raffle where there's gonna be a drawing on the 11th of February, I think. And they're also running like the concession stands at some of the basketball games, I believe. The sophomores are planning penny wars. That's not 100% set yet, but I think it's probably gonna happen. We've done it in the past and it's very successful. And the seniors, I think we're talking about finally doing that bake sale because they mentioned that a while ago, but it got postponed due to COVID and bad weather. So I think that's happening soon. And then the Mary Poppins musical is also going to start a popcorn fundraiser next week, which I know we've done a lot of times with other grades and it's always been very successful also. And then for the dance, I know it's been kind of talked about a little bit. We were thinking doing maybe a mini spirit week the week before winter break starts and then the dance would be that Friday. And I think Adam Graves said that there were no games that day, so if the dance does happen and gets approved, then it will be that day. I know there was a meeting with Mr. Barnes about the dance, but I wasn't updated on the status of it yet. So we will find out and I'm guessing it would just depend on the COVID cases and everything. So yeah, that's about it today.
Okay, thank you. If someone would like to contribute to some of the fundraisers, should they check in with the office? Are you thinking? Would they have information for each of the classes or how best could we do that maybe?
Well, any, well, since there's so many different ones happening, I'm guessing the only members or students you know in the community you could reach out to because they would know for their grades since most of these are grade-wide fundraisers except the musical. And otherwise, the office might know some, but I'm thinking either that or like the teachers who like run each grade and the fundraisers. So I'm not completely sure yet. But also there will things, things, things will be posted on Facebook and Instagram. And so it's easy because I think a lot of these are also online. I know the popcorn one is.
Oh, that would be great. That would be great. People can look online as well or if they know some students in the class. Thank you. That's a great suggestion.
Sina, thank you so much. And if I could, if you could just take some information back to student council for the purpose of planning that when a proposal is prepared for the dance, can you please send it to me so that I'm able to run it by the Board of Health?
Yes.
I mean, if obviously even with COVID cases going down, we want to make sure that we're doing it safely and that that's something that the Board of Health has been very helpful and cooperative in providing us with guidance. So.
Yeah, that'd be very, that'd be very good because the last dance we had was outside, so it was much easier for the regulations. I don't know how it works if we're gonna be in the building because it's gonna be too cold to do outside.
Most likely.
And I'll find out what the result of the meeting was with Mr. Barnes.
Great. Thank you very much, Sina.
Thanks a lot. As always, we appreciate you coming in, filling us in on things.
Of course. My pleasure.
Thank you. Superintendent's report, Brian?
So in recognitions, I wanted to share our gratitude for the high school, for the Montague Elks, for their generous donation of $2,500 to the high school's Helping Hands Athletic Leadership Council. The Elks leadership arrived at the school today and presented the check in person at the high school's all-school meeting. The student leaders in the council will be using these funds again to provide food to families in the community who are in need. In addition, this donation is also being used to provide free snacks for the students in the school musical who were there for hours and hours after school. And we're very pleased with the Athletic Leadership Council for collaborating to also support students in the arts. And thank you to the Montague Elks and the thoughtful approach of the high school staff and students to using this resource to support student participation in extracurricular activities across the community. So we're very appreciative of the Elks. COVID case counts in the last 14 days are the highest they've ever been in addition to the percent positivity in the town of Montague is 15.5 and 14.73 in Gil in the state overall. The percent positivity over the last 14 days has, is at 20.61%. Obviously, the CDC still ranks us as Franklin County is high for transmission. And the Commissioner and Department of Education's mask mandate is remaining in place until at least February 28th. I shared some information on the new state testing program for schools that schools can opt into. And Melissa Bednarzki, our nurse leader, shared some information that we subsequently sent out to families. I've included that here that the basic idea behind the new testing process is to identify cases, as many, many more cases before they get into school. And so the concept is to provide at least one rapid test kit per student per week. We will still be doing pool testing and we still can chase some, I'm sorry, test symptomatic students or students who come up in a pool with a positive PCR test in the pool. So we're still able to maintain almost everything we do now, but adding the additional layer of adding the home tests should be helpful to us in maximizing the opportunities that we have to keep the virus out of the schools. The general thinking behind it or the general research is also shared in the document that I included with the superintendent's report that came from the Department of Education, basically describing the program and the research behind it. That in general, because students are masked and distanced and following protocols in schools, schools are places that where there are very, very low incidences of transmission. So we, like other school districts, have been successful with this. However, with it happening with the bulk of the transmission, bulk of the transmission happening out there in the community, the idea that the state has to get these test kits out to families and have the school make recommendations about when families should be doing the tests on a weekly basis, that's still information that we have to put together. Tomorrow, Melissa Bednarzki and I will be attending another webinar as well as I'll be meeting with the Connecticut Valley superintendents. We just recently received some of the test kits for staff that we expected to receive on Monday, so they were a day late. And so we've pushed the process of getting these out to staff to next week. And a big part of what we need to be able to do is provide clarity for families on the shift, when we're going to be making the shift, and then the distribution plan to get the test kits home so that families have them on hand.
Nick, do you have a question?
Yeah, we've already opted into this. Is that correct?
Yes, we've opted in. The priority opt-in date, so that the information just came out last week and the priority opt-in date was January 21st. So we put in an opt-in knowing that we can change our status at any point in time. I did also want to share that Melissa Bednarzki provided me with an update that the state's vax bus was here at the high school yesterday and more than 130 doses of the Pfizer vaccine were administered to students, staff, and members of the community yesterday. So thank you again to Melissa for setting that up. And that's it for the super's report.
Okay, any questions for Brian? Okay, thank you. Business and operations report, Joanne?
I just have the budget to talk about, so we can talk about that during the budget discussion if you'd like.
That, that makes sense. It's in the business section. If that's.
Okay.
Yes, thank you.
You're welcome.
Under School Committee Reports, we have two warrants to approve. If it's acceptable, I will read them and then I'll entertain a motion to approve them both at once. The first is for fiscal year '22. It's a.
We lost you, Jane.
As they come due. The second is an accounts payable warrant for paying bills fiscal year '22, number 3220, also dated January 26, 2022, and that's in the amount of $193,778.07.
Jane, can you go back to the scholarship one because we have lost you during that whole conversation?
Oh, okay. I didn't even notice. I was in dis. The scholarship warrant is dated January 26, 2022. It's warrant number 1001. It's in the amount of $16,750.
I'll move. We consider both of them.
Thank you, Bill.
Second, Heather.
And Heather seconded, and I will take a roll call vote for approval. Jennifer?
Yes.
Cassie?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Yes.
And myself. Yes. Thank you. That's unanimous. Moving on to the business portion of the meeting, the first item is discussion of remote in-person school committee meetings. As of right now, we really don't have any new information. It's, it's still masks necessary, so I believe we'll continue virtually as long as we need to. And then when we don't have to, that will be a good thing. We'll let you know when there's any changes, anything, anyone have anything about that? Okay, the next item is a vote to accept the donation from the Montague Elks to the Helping Hands Athletic Leadership Council. Brian explained what that was. Their very generous donation to our district. We so appreciate that. I will entertain a motion to approve, to accept the donation.
I'll move it.
Bill, thank you.
Second.
And Heather seconded. Again, we'll take a roll call vote to approve that. Jennifer?
Yes.
Cassie?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Yes, and myself. Thank you again to the Elks. Very, very much appreciated. Okay, item C is the fiscal year '23 preliminary budget, budget. And this is only preliminary, but we do need to take a vote this evening. So Joanne?
Okay, so if you remember when we presented the budget on January 11th and then we talked about it again on the 18th, we did have a deficit budget of about $300,000. So we were putting together our reductions so we could adjust the budget by that amount for the last couple of days. And just as I was getting ready to send this off to Sabrina and Brian to forward off to all of you, I received notification from the town of Montague that they had revised the affordable assessment calculation. So I went back to the drawing board and I made a few changes. So we, with that added revenue, it amounted to about $116,000 between the two towns. So it's great news. It just made me have to go back to the drawing board. We were able to reduce the amount that we're using from E&amp;D. So that's good because we were using a little more from E&amp;D that I was really comfortable with. So we reduced that by $50,000 and then we made some adjustments to some salary or some non-salary lines. And so you can see those on the back of the sheet that I provided to you. And what I did is list the account number, the name of the account, the reduction, and the line number from your detailed budget document from the 18th. So you can see where those lines go. I didn't go back and update it all of it for this meeting and give you a new updated copy because as soon as the state numbers come out tomorrow, I'm gonna be back to the drawing board because then I'll know minimum contributions and I'll know the actual town assessments and what Chapter 70 is. So we'll have more information tomorrow and I'll begin revising all of that. So then we'll have that revised budget when we meet with the town officials on 31st. So the budget that you're going to approve tonight is the preliminary operating budget of $22,585,566. And this budget is funded with $250,000 from E&amp;D and $200,000 from the transportation revolving account. So all of that should be part of your vote.
Okay, I will entertain a motion in a second and then we'll see if there's any discussion. Do I hear a motion?
Some.
Heather, thank you. Second?
Second.
Jennifer, thank you. Okay, any questions for Jennifer? Joanne, I'm sorry. Any discussion at this point? Again, it is preliminary, but that's the way we go through the process. We approve a preliminary and then we work on it. Bill?
I just want to go back to what I addressed at the last meeting and I promise I'm not talking about the position. I'm talking about the finances. So it's budget. But in the issue of the resource officer and the request and the acceptance on, through the budget of paying an extra sum of money to cover the cost of the officer, my immediate reflection is simply that the town of Montague said that they gave us an affordable amount that they wanted to put towards education. And then a totally separate department requests a, essentially a transfer of educational funds to their. to their department instead of the town reducing the amount of affordable assessment that they presented to the school committee and just given the money to the police department. I understand fully that everybody is under pressure to try to maintain costs. But that's just um a disturbing part of financial requests from the between two political entities, the town of Montague and the Gil-Montague Regional School District. We don't have policing powers, so we do have to rely on an outside source authority to provide them. And I hope that I've made my point. This has nothing to do with the position. I think the position as it exists today has been a great asset regardless of what the surveys say. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else have anything they'd like to add? Any questions for Joanne? Again, any questions can be referred to her at any time as well, but if there's anything at the moment.
Okay, Jane, you might be frozen.
Am I don't think so. Maybe I'm just not moving.
Oh, yeah. Um, I I just I know this is preliminary that we're voting, but I and I guess I don't know if this is a question for Joanne or maybe Diane, but I am interested sort of in the special education budget per se and how we're funding that to ensure that services are being provided adequately, which is a whole nother thing, but I just wanted to put that out there.
So we can probably bring some information. We Diane and I can put something together for the next meeting.
That would be very helpful. Thanks. Yes, that's a good.
Right. And going forward between now and March 8th, I believe it's March 8th that you'll vote the final budget, we will be having conversations about specifics within the budget. So that would be the time for that. So we can talk about the special ed budget. If there's any other, we can talk about the SRO budget. If there's any other sections that you want more information on, I'm happy to put that together for you. And then you can take a look at, you know, the number of students versus the number of staff, that type of thing. So we can do something like that. So if anybody has specifics that they want, I can do that before the next meeting.
Thank you. Yes, just please um get in touch with Joanne at her office and um she'll bring that information too. Thank you. Okay, we have a motion. We have a second to approve the preliminary budget and the wording is printed in the information. Move to approve the fiscal year 23 preliminary operating budget of $22,585,566. Do we need to also include the note, Joanne?
Yes.
And the note is this budget is funded with 250,000 from E and D and 200,000 from transportation revolving. We have a motion. We have a second. We'll have a roll call vote. Jennifer?
Yes.
Cassie?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Bill?
Yep.
Nick?
Yes.
And myself. Yes. Thank you. So that's unanimous as well. Oh, I read the names wrong. Sorry. That was Heather and Jennifer made the motion and seconded. I was looking at the wrong line. I apologize. Um, school choice participation for the next school year. We do need to take a vote on this at this point each year. Brian, anything to bring us on that in that respect?
No, nothing in particular other than, um, you know, just noting that all the schools in our area are participating in school choice and um I would advocate for continuing to participate.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion and a second.
Some of.
Heather, thank you.
Second.
Bill, thank you. Any discussion about that? Jennifer?
Uh, yeah, so we cannot participate. That's a I mean, I'm just for information purposes only.
Right, unless I'm remembering it wrong. And correct me, Brian, if I've got it wrong. I think I've got it after all these years. We can vote not to allow acceptance of school choice students in our district, but we cannot vote to prohibit students from leaving our district to go to another district. Our vote is only about allowing them into our district. Is that correct?
That's my understanding. Yep, that's my understanding of the regulations.
That's correct. Thank you very much for that clarification.
Thanks. Anything else about that? Okay, we have a motion. We have a second. We'll take a roll call vote. Jennifer?
Yes.
Cassie?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
And myself. Yes, thank you. Um, moving on, the next item is a discussion about the school resource officer. We have been collecting information Brian has provided for this evening. Brian?
So I just provided a a brief summary of a survey. Tina assisted me in identifying there's a a national organization that's done a pretty extensive research with some universities on the pros and cons of having school resource officers in various districts across the country. And there were some good uh sort of stems for for questions for surveys in there. We actually expanded the survey just a bit to gather some information from students about climate. And uh who they feel comfortable reporting things to if if they have a concern. However, there were two separate surveys with very similar with some very similar questions and the staff survey didn't have the the three student questions in it. When we put the survey out electronically, I realized that we had probably only have about 55 staff at the high school if every staff member had responded. And as I began to look at the survey responses, it climbed up to 160. So the only thing that could possibly have happened is that some some instructional staff probably believed that the survey was the same for students and staff. And so there's there are definitely students who responded to the staff survey. The thing that we know is there are no members outside of the school community who could have responded and everybody could only respond once based on the settings that we had. So there's no private responses. So uh, given that we had 279 responses out of about 450, so we had about 62% of faculty and staff responded. And uh, what Tina pulled for me was um the the there are six graphs included here that just provide a summary and consensus on the three questions that were in common for both groups. The first question, how important do you feel it is to have a school resource officer in school? That is on a scale of one, that it's not needed to four, very important. Question two, how do you feel with a school resource officer? How safe do you feel with a school resource officer in your school? One is not safe to four is extremely safe. And then the last two graphs, do you feel comfortable with relating slash talking to the school resource officer? And um, that's on a scale of five with one being not comfortable at all and five being very comfortable. So I just wanted to share those graphs and that information with the school committee. Just as a point of of information that we, you know, we've we've surveyed folks about their sort of just cursory thoughts about the school resource program and safety. We did also gather some other information that we'll pull together with the administrative team. And some of the survey, some of the climate questions, um, I may ask Christopher to readminister a little bit later on in the school year to students because some of the information that we were gathering was validating some really positive things that are occurring in the school unrelated to the school resource officer. And also identifying some some really good ideas that came from students and staff about um continuing to make improvements to the climate at the high school. So that's information that we're going to want to pull together. There there was also spaces for people to identify the three things that they liked. You know, or thought were strengths of the school resource officer program. And also recommendations for improvements. And if the committee would like, we could share, we could pull those together and share them at a later date, but it was too much to pull that together today before the meeting and share that information today.
Bill?
Brian, thanks a lot for that. On the positive side, the graphs Jeff definitely show one thing that things get better as you get higher in your number count. But how is it that every single one of the graph depictions? Not one of them comes out to 100%. They all are like 110, 115. So obviously a lot of people submitted a form to get that many which kind of puts a damper on the legitimacy of of the graphing, but it doesn't put a damper on the legitimacy of the graphing. It puts a damper on trying to figure out how the numbers add add up or don't. But do you know what I mean? I think it's positive, but I have to throw a a curve in there somehow.
Bill, I didn't. I'm sorry. I didn't notice that and look, I you know, I did took a cursory look at the numbers. And you know, so so starting with that first graph, it looks like to me that comes out to 100%. 52, but again, I don't have a calculator in front of me.
52 and 30 something.
Is 85.
And 60 and 16 is 101. And then a percent is 102. I think that's what the graph looks like. I don't have it in front of me.
You're close, but the 16 is the number and the 10 is the percent and the 32 and 35 you were adding or 54 were percentages. So, yeah.
I'm sorry, Bill. I didn't understand specifically what you were saying. It's right. The 16 is the number of respondents who gave.
Oh, so I'm mixing wrong numbers.
The percentage is in the percentage is in parentheses.
Okay, thank you very much. Now I get it.
Well, that thank you for the clarification. I was like, oh, God, this is worse than I thought mathematically.
No, I got the clarification from you. Thank you.
Brian, since we're not to share the graph, I know it just arrived, so we couldn't really put it in a form that we could share on the screen. Could you perhaps just give the listening audience, um, maybe the questions and the general percentages, some kind of an idea because they can't really be looking at it?
Sure. So in the um, so again, to respond, two sets of responses. The one that's primarily students is the the 119 responses. So that people are aware, the one that's 160 is was initially the staff survey. So amongst the staff, 85% felt like it was a rated a three or a four, that it was important to very important and 15% felt like it was not needed or not very important. And then amongst students, the numbers are similar. Just under 85% with of students feeling um it's important to very important. On the issue of safety, how feel how safe do you feel with a school resource officer in your school? That's about 84% of individuals in the um survey indicating that it's important, I'm sorry, that they feel safe or very safe with a school resource officer in the school. The average between the two surveys is also how safe do you feel with a school resource officer in the school? Between safe and very safe for the the ratings of three or four. That's about 88% between the students and staff who responded. How you how comfortable? Do you feel relating or talking with the school resource officer? There are higher in the 160 responses where there's staff, staff obviously has more extensive interactions with the school resource officer on a fairly regular basis. But not all students do. And so you can see that uh you know, about 40 about 49% of the the respondents in the 160 feel very comfortable. There's a very small percentage that don't feel comfortable at all or not very comfortable. And then there's about 20% in the middle that are ambivalent about whether or not they feel comfortable. And then you see those numbers change a little bit on just the student side because not all students have a direct relationship with the school resource officer. And so those numbers are about just under 40% of uh the student respondents feeling very comfortable with the school resource officer. And about 25% feeling ambivalent. So that's just a little bit of of summary of what's on the graphs from the responses.
I appreciate you giving us that summary because I know for a fact that information was just arrived at at about 1 o'clock this afternoon. Is that correct?
Yeah, you happened to be there when we we closed out the survey. So.
Right, so it's fresh information. Anyone have any questions or comments about that? Okay, thank you. The next item under business is
Heather had her hand up, Jane.
Oh, I'm sorry. I turned. I blinked.
Oh, it's all right. I was late and I just it was just a realization that I meant to say that I appreciate Brian for putting that together and getting it up.
I also, Heather, I appreciate the suggestion and the recommendation and uh I wish we could have had it open a bit longer to get everybody to respond, but I think Christopher did a phenomenal job of getting the information out and providing students and staff the opportunity to to give a response to the survey. And the the other information that we have, we will also use internally. As I mentioned, to uh make some recommendations, not only to improve the SRO program itself, but also other areas of the school and climate. So I appreciate the significant number of students who took the time to thoughtfully respond and also share ideas.
Thank you. Uh, the next item under business is um we're looking for someone who might be interested in the newly opened Montague School Committee seat. Unfortunately, we have another one that's opened up with our loss of Mike. Um, it is a Montague seat as well. We will be advertising that and giving people a chance to think about sending us a letter of interest in that seat. I'll make sure it gets into both of the newspapers. So we'll have that information out there. And moving on to the next item, we do have someone who has sent us a letter of interest for the seat that's been open for some time and he's joining us this evening. We have John Arminger with us in one of our little boxes here. Hi, John. How are you?
A fine, a fine. Thank you, Jane.
Thanks. And we have included the uh letter of interest in our packet this evening. There's John's letter is there and um so tonight we would like to uh vote to appoint him to the vacant seat and have us become one of us. Anything you'd like to add, John?
Um, well, I'm a a I taught for 24 years in California public school. I was a middle school math teacher in a large urban district. I got my original teaching credential at UMass Amherst, so I knew this was a great area to retire. I have no institutional knowledge of Montague or Gill schools. I have no institutional knowledge of Montague or Gill schools. I don't know what the personalities are. And I don't know what the issues are. And I'd just like to fulfill a technical role.
Thank you, we're happy that you want to join us.
Okay, thank you, I'm honored to do so.
I will entertain a motion to appoint John to the seat.
Come on, welcome, John.
Heather? Do we have a second?
Again.
Jennifer, thank you. And we will have another roll call vote for this. Jennifer?
Yes.
Cassie?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
And myself, yes, definitely, thank you. And so John will be sworn in by the town clerk at his convenience. And then Brian and I will hold an orientation session to give him a lot of information to digest. And then by our next meeting, he will be a voting member. Thank you so much, John.
Okay, it's an honor to be on the board, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, John.
Our next item is appointment of school committee members to subcommittees. We do have some vacancies in subcommittees. I will just find the list here. Unfortunately, we now have a vacancy on Unit A for negotiating as well as Unit as well as custodial and cafeteria. Because Mike was in both of those units for negotiating. So we are looking for someone who might be willing to, right now negotiating subcommittee for Unit A consists of Jennifer and myself.
What is your first memory of Unit A is?
It's teachers and nurses and that type of that acting. It also includes probably another category, Joanne.
I can do that, no one else wants to do it, I can do it.
Okay, thank you, Nick, we appreciate it. And Unit C is right currently, no, we're all set with Unit C. Custodial and food service is Cassie and myself. If someone is interested in joining, that would be fine. Otherwise, we can manage with two at this point, two is enough for a quorum. And if someone thinks about it and would like to become part of that group later, they're certainly welcome. Okay. So I will entertain a vote to, a motion to appoint Nick to the Unit A negotiating subcommittee.
Come on, thanks, Nick.
Heather, thank you.
I'll second it.
Bill? And roll call vote for that as well, Jennifer?
Yes.
Cassie?
We lost you, Jane.
I know, I think I'm back, Cassie?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
No?
Yep.
Nick?
Yes.
And myself, yes, thank you, Nick. The next item, we need to have someone who would be willing to be appointed to be our assistant treasurer. Mike also held that role. The assistant treasurer for the school committee is an office that we have to fill. But as a rule, they do not have to step in and do anything in that role unless our, the treasurer that the district employs is not available to do something that needs to be done. Joanne, can you explain that any better than I did?
I think you did pretty good. So, you know, in order to become the treasurer, the assistant treasurer, there's a lot of paperwork that you need to do. We need to have you sign everything at the banks. You need to be bonded. So there is paperwork, there's a lot that goes into it. And so if you do want to be the assistant treasurer, we do hope that you'll stick around for a long time. So we don't have to do this again.
So you, people might need to have a little time to think about that. I was assistant treasurer at one point before I was lucky enough to become chair. And I actually never had to do anything, I don't think. Once I was bonded and knew how much I was worth, it was just kind of one of those things, I was there name only. So people could think about that. Okay, we'll bring it up at the next one. We'll also look at things like our warrant subcommittee. We'll need to have another member for that when we get back to meeting in person again. So we'll bring that back up as well at a later date. Thank you. The last item under tonight's business is a possible vote on the composition of negotiations subcommittee for the custodial negotiations. We're currently in negotiations with the custodial unit. And there is a thought that instead of the school committee members, as well as our business manager and a representative of the law firm, that we might revert to having just the business manager and the lawyer be the negotiating team for the time being. That's a proposal that's out there. Certainly can have a discussion about it and then we'll take a vote. Heather?
I'm for changing the composition, I feel like something needs to change. So it's been through a couple iterations already. It sounds like this might be the next step.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, I will entertain a motion to alter the composition of the negotiating subcommittee for custodial negotiations to include Joanne Blyer, our business manager, and Adam Dupree, our lawyer. I need a motion?
Come on.
Heather, thank you.
Second.
Any other discussion? Okay, we'll have a roll call vote for that. Jennifer?
Yes.
Cassie?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
And me, yes, thank you, that's unanimous. Okay, the other item on our agenda tonight is approval of minutes for the December 7th and the December 21st meetings. I can entertain a motion to approve them as a package or we can do them separately if people would prefer.
I'd like to move them as a package.
Okay, thank you, Bill. Do we have a second? Jennifer, I think, and I think you beat Nick, he was quick, but you were quicker. Any questions or discussion of that? Okay, another roll call vote coming up, Jennifer?
Yes.
Cassie?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Okay. Um, next item, if there's anything people would like added to our agenda, typically Brian, Cassie and I will meet next Tuesday, a week from today, which is a week.
Water plants? Water plants?
Oh.
No, I'm sorry, I didn't know I was.
That's okay.
Trying to get Sina to do some charge.
That's okay, we could get a volunteer for that too. But you know, I'm sorry, we've asked for too many.
Who wants to come water my plants? Yeah.
I could come water.
Sina seconds that.
He doesn't get a vote, she's not a member, we like having her as on our. Really? So let us know if you have any particular agenda requests. Dates for our next scheduled meetings, the regular meeting next is February 8th. And that will include the public hearing on the preliminary school budget. The, and the preliminary hearing will be the first item of business that we will interact at that meeting. Okay, I think that's pretty much it for this evening. I thank you all for your work, I appreciate it. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Come on.
Heather, thank you. Second?
Again.
Jennifer, thank you. We'll have to take a roll call to see if everybody really wants to be done, Jennifer?
Yes.
Cassie?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
And me, yes, definitely, thank you all very much.
Hi. Good night, everyone. Oh, thank you, Tina.
Thanks, Heather.